Today is Monday, August 11th. Welcome to Binghamton City Council Work Session. It is 6:02 PM and I call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Murray is absent. Councilmember Middleton present. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Councilmember Rathwell.
Present.
Councilwoman Matavetsky is absent. Council President Dundon.
Present.
Thank you.
So first on the agenda is RL 25-127. It is in the Committee of Public Works and Parks. The Chairmember, the Chairman is Councilmember Hotchkiss and the presenter is Ron Lake. Megan, you filling in for Ron, I'm assuming? Okay.
So this is, we have RL 25-127, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a 2025 surveying term agreement with Hubert Engineering. Got anything else you want to add to this, Megan?
Uh, that's the gist. I, I believe you, were you part of the RFQ committee, Councilman?
Yep.
Okay, so yeah, it was selected through, uh, public RFQ. Um, Holbert had held the term agreement, uh, previously for three years, um, and they were ranked again as the top firm. Uh, so this is just signing them on for, uh, up to three more years with the city.
Yeah, I mean, Megan, do you know anything off the top of your head that they would be surveying, like, that's coming up that they would need?
Um, coming up? I can't think of anything off the top of my head. I think they were just over recently at Ross Park. Um, they're getting ready to do the work to move the carousel up there. Um, so Holbert did the surveying for that. And then in the, um, the packet was their, like, application or their response to RFQ. That included 69 Collier and Parlor City Commons, I believe. But Ron would be able to tell you certainly what's, what's coming up that they, they'll be used for.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Nope.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's pretty cut and dry being a three-year agreement. All right, we'll move on. Next is RL 25-31. It's in Public Works and Parks. Councilmember Hotchkiss is the chair and Deputy Mayor Megan Hyman will be filling in for Ron Lake.
So this is RL 25-10130, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a supplemental agreement number five with Barton and Legitis for the USA COE and New York State DEC Pipe Conduit Inspection Maintenance Rehabilitation Work Phase Three. So for this one, he's kind of trying to break a record for how many supplemental agreements we can have. Uh, but what's, what are the, what are the details for this?
Sure, yeah. So, um, this stems from, uh, the regular inspections of the city's floodwalls and levees that the Army Corps and the DEC do. Um, the DEC, uh, just continues to come back to, um, the city recommending, uh, additional, uh, work. Um, so, uh, this is, this legislation would add the, uh, proposed, uh, work from the DEC, um, to the current BNL contract.
Is it, do we know if we have the $87,800 in the budget to cover?
Um, I am assuming that we do because Ron did not bring a transfer down with this. It's just authorizing the supplemental. Um, but I will follow up with him tomorrow and confirm that he has a budget line.
Okay, thank you.
Right, yeah, I also, I mean, the hits just keep on coming with, with this particular agreement. It's a, and I, now with BNL, we're up to a quarter million dollars of engineering and design work for a project that's, where it costs well under a million dollars. I, I just, I mean, I'm trying to figure out why we're having meetings with the DEC in 2025 for a project that was kind of scoped in 2021. The initial photos and survey were done in 2022. And 2025, they're still coming up with more suggestions that we have to meet. I mean, it's, I'm wondering at what point we need to start pushing back at DEC to, I mean, they're just running up costs on us. That are, I, I, I mean, it's necessary work, but, but let's get it, you know, figured out. That's, it's a frustra, it's a very frustrating process that I'm, I just don't know if we should push back against our betters at the state a little bit at some point, anyway. So, I'm gonna have a chat with Ron, that's all.
Yeah, Ron would probably have more insight on that. Just, I, I, I just know that it stems from, uh, DEC coming, continuing to come to us with, with more recommendations.
It's why I'm not asking you any construction or any questions, Megan. I know you're not, I'll follow up with Ron.
He would be happy to speak with you.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any other questions on this RL for Megan?
I guess, I guess, is it, um, typical or, like, reasonable to expect that, that the DEC keeps kind of, like, pushing the needle? That they would also help try to find funding to, um, help with this project or, like, these type of projects?
We've received funding from them in the past. Whether we've been able to apply it to these specific projects, I don't know. Um, but, uh, I, I can ask Ron to address that, uh, too.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Thank you so much, Megan.
Thank you.
Next is RL 25-128. It is in the Finance Committee. The chairs, Councilmember Kavanaugh and Tom Brown. Please come on down.
Hello.
Good evening. This is, uh, sorry, uh, RL 25-128, norance to win the 2025 water fund budget to account for additional professional service expenses. And this is under a Brian Caldwell contract, so where are we at?
Almost done.
Okay.
Almost done. Uh, this, uh, as you probably know, it's all, it has to do with the EPA inspection. Uh, we've got a couple of boxes left to check. And so the last email they sent was, there's gonna be a couple more invoices and then we're done after this.
Okay.
It's just, it's, the projects aren't going, they cost money, so we're taking it a step at a time. So it's drawing this out a little extra.
Sure. Uh, this is a relatively minor transfer, uh, but I, I would like to, so the, the, if you look at the packet from Ron, from engineering for the last RL.
That's all I got.
Um, that's more like the, the style of information that, you know, we're going over, here's what we still need to do, whatever, that, that would be nice to have included um, for future transfer requests and things, so.
You're talking about, you're talking about the RL paperwork?
Yes, yeah, as far as included.
I was gonna help him with that.
Okay.
Um, and I just wanted to say something. This was, this Brian Caldwell project was originally paid for with ARPA funds, but the ARPA funds have run out, so now he has to pay for it out of his regular line.
Right. This is, uh, just over 11,000 and we're anticipating this will finish out the contract then?
Excuse me?
We anticipate this will finish out the contract and won't be of another overage?
Yep.
And then we have to deal with the findings of the project, right? The, the, as far as the, some of the, uh, this was catching up with EPA regs, but there's, there's also the new PFAS stuff coming down the line, right?
Totally separate from this. Yep, we should, we're getting funding already for lawsuits. So we shouldn't have to fund anything out of the city.
Did crush your finger?
No.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
And next is RL 25-132. That is also in Finance with Councilmember Kavanaugh and Nick Ballard will be the presenter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think you're gonna, I'm gonna put my Karnak hat on here. You're gonna be telling us about storm damage and overtime.
You're not wrong. Um, I guess we could start with the overtime, I guess. Uh, you know, with the storm damage, you know, we, we did have an excessive amount of overtime. Um, aside from that, we also have, um, a ton of, uh, events that we have to attend. We usually have at least two guys, um, on there. A lot of them have required bathrooms and garbage as well. Um, the parks have been hopping this year because the weather's been great. So we've had two guys on Saturday, two guys on Sunday, um, to kind of help with the, the overflowing garbage, so, um, it's not just going to waste. We're, uh, trying to keep the parks clean.
I did have a, I guess it's an overtime-related question. Um, National Light Out, I happen to notice that the carousel was not running at Rick Park, just a note for, I don't know if that was left hand, right hand, didn't know what the other was doing, but that'd be a nice thing to have running.
Yeah, that could have been due to staffing issues. I'd have to ask Jake on that one. Um, and with our other transfer that we're requesting is, uh, for our temporary services, this is our summer help laborers. We, we had a, a great staff with summer help laborers this year. And we also did hire a few extra this year, so, um, it did run over a little bit. It's hard to kind of feel it out with the summer help because they're, they're young kids and sometimes they take vacations. Sometimes they don't. And this year, we had a, we had a lot of full pay periods, so we did have some pretty hefty pay periods going out, so. But we're thankful to have them and we, and that's why we're asking for a transfer because we'd like to keep them on for a little bit longer.
Really, Nick, trying to recruit apprentices for our union and you're getting, uh, high school graduates and having them work their first summer, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, oh, I'm going on vacation with mom.
Yeah, I don't believe them. Yeah, we had a great staff, though. I mean, we had a lot of kids that came back for their second and third year and, you know, they do, they do help us out a lot. Um, especially those ones that are repeat, you know, year to year, you know, they're getting more experienced. And we've actually hired a couple of them on full-time, so it works out. It's nice to have them and, uh, you know, you get to feel them out a little bit and, uh, if, if we do have openings, we try to put them in them.
Have any programs been limited this year by staff issues as far as capacity or?
No, not really, other than, like, you know, just same stuff. I mean, if, if, if we're understaffed, it's because they're on vacation or, um, you know, it's, it's summer staff, so, uh, we can't really control 100% on how much they're there. It's just, we work with what we got, so.
Chuck, would you draw, my memory, I, I don't have my budget book in front of me. The, the lines is coming out of his temporary services and it's going into a different temporary services. Which part of the budget are we drawing from?
This. Yeah, one's coming.
A7140 going A.
From the 140, that's his, um, your rec line. And then that's the other one's going to his, what, 7110?
That's our parks.
That's the parks, that's the park line. So rec to parks, so it's still within the overall department.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
We did have, uh, $13,000 ARPA money last year and that ran out, so we didn't have that. We did lose eight grand this year as well.
Nick, my only question is what, what, when the park is helping, or when Parks is helping with, uh, storm cleanup, like, what specifically is being done? Is it just like the tree crew that goes to pick up or did you allocate other staff or?
Um, no, it's, um, not limited to our tree crew. Uh, we use anyone we can, other than we don't take temporary help out, obviously in the evening and doing storm damage, so it's all full-time workers, but yet everyone gets a chance to go out and, uh, work overtime. We'll take everyone, you know, especially in a situation like that. We need all the help we can get. Yeah, well, it starts out as a call-out and then we just schedule it, you know, and, you know, we keep coming in until it's cleaned up. You know, as long as we can get guys to come in, we, we stay and do as best we can to clean it up. Uh, we did have a ton of help from DPW this year. They were great. So I think it was, it was cleaned up in a pretty timely manner considering the amount of damage that we, we encountered.
And, and for our friends watching at home, uh, the, uh, the Parks Department tree crew doesn't just do the trees in the park. They do all the street trees through, throughout the city with the, the arborist and their trimming crews. So it's, it's, this labor and overtime is not just in the parks solely, it's, it's, and on all the tree trees.
Absolutely. We actually start, we start with, you know, the streets first. We want to clear the streets so the pedestrians can get around. Um, our, our parks kind of sat a little idle for a little bit, but as long as they're not a major danger, uh, you know, we can let them ride and get the streets clear so everyone can, traffic-wise and, uh, pedestrians walking on sidewalks. Um, then we ended up going to our parks last, of course, but.
No, at least up on the east side, Nick, I thought you guys did a great job, so thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
So does anyone else have any other questions for Nick? Hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you so much, Nick.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next is RL 25-134. That is in Municipal and Public Affairs with Councilmember Middleton and Kyle Keemack is our presenter.
Thank you, uh.
Kyle, did I say that correct?
Okay.
Thank you, uh, President Dundon. This is RL 25-134. A resolution, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept grant funds for the US DOJ for Edward Burn JAG Program FY23. And I guess it's, it's kind of for RL, uh, 25, I mean, RL 25-135. So it's just two different fiscal year. Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, as far as that, uh, funding goes from, uh, the Department of Justice, it funds, uh, patrol officers, uniformed officers to, uh, do community engagement in the city parks.
Okay, and I just had a question. So it's for 23 and, uh, 25, so these are already, this already happened already, correct? It just, it looks like it ends on the, it ends in 2027.
Um, at, for the?
For FY, um, for fiscal year 24, it does, it looks like.
For the fiscal year 24, that one, I believe, still has some time till 2027. Uh, the fiscal year 23, technically, the grant itself had an end date of 2026 and we had a, uh, issue for the previous few, um, uh, JAG burn grants where our staffing obviously was a lot lower, so the ability to put out officers on overtime was diminished for this, uh, initiative. Um, as far as this grant for the fiscal year 23, we'll end up probably getting the extension just to move those funds an, an additional year.
Okay, so I had a question. Um, in here, it says, uh, this basically helps with investigating domestic and mental health-related incidents? Is there some, is there an officer, a special officer assigned? With the grant, I'm sorry.
Could we clarify the split? So we've got 134 and 136 that are related to the parks piece and then 135 that are related to the firearms piece? Is it, is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep, so, uh, RL 25-134 and 136 reflect the JAG burn parks.
Okay.
Um, but.
Sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
Yeah, no, I can address 135 too as well when we, yep. Um, so that funding is, uh, newer funding from New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services. Uh, it is to help, um, investigators, uh, with responding to and, um, I guess, dealing with, uh, extreme risk protection orders, ERPOs, which often are domestic incidents, uh, where if, uh, crime was committed and the order of protection, extreme risk was violated, then, uh, they would have, like, their weapons, um, held so that, uh, if anything were to happen, they wouldn't have weapons to affect, like, make additional criminal activity against, uh, loved ones or other individuals.
So I had a question. I know a few months back, we voted on a domestic violence, like, something to the state. Does this, is, is this entailed with that? Or is this something different?
This is something separate, but DCGS is, uh, moving forward with a lot of, like, domestic-related, um, ways to, like, help with victims crime prevention via domestic incidents.
Kyle, you're using, you use the word extreme risk, but the language of the legislation for ERPO is emotionally disturbed persons orders. And I think for me, I'm compelled to point out that this request related to, quote, "mental health-related incidents" comes just two weeks after President Trump's executive order that promotes involuntary institutionalization of unhoused individuals based on a false presumption that their mental health symptoms or symptoms they may have are only effectively addressed in forced treatment settings. So I realize this RL claims to focus solely on incidents that involve firearms, but the current political climate and state of our police department puts this initiative for me far too close for my comfort.
Um, and the only thing I would like to clarify is that, that, uh, section there is a typo. Um, it should read, uh, extreme risk, uh, protection orders. Um, however, they can have to deal with, uh, emotionally disturbed persons.
The, the mental health-related incident?
Yes, mental health-related incidents.
Far too close for my comfort. I do have comments on 134 and 136 as well.
I figured we were tying it, tying them all in together at this point, unless, Kyle, you have an issue with that?
No. Yeah, fine. That's why I was reading them off like that. That's fine. Um, I had some other questions too. So, um, it says, um, for, this is FY, um, the first one, 130, 134. Can you explain what that funding's for? It's a 36-month grant to place on uniformed police officers in the parks?
Um, yes, so the, that's the fiscal year 23 Edward Burn JAG program. Um, and that is funding of 35,000, approximately $35,000 for overtime to put uniformed patrol officers um, in the city parks to engage with the public.
I, I mean, I, similarly, it feels astoundingly oblivious to me that these requests for funding to support the deployment of law enforcement to city parks are being introduced on the same day that President Trump declared martial law in DC to do the same. In my opinion, these RLs and this method of policing claim the same pretense of public safety as the executive order Trump issued this morning. They're rooted in the same false narrative around crime and homelessness that Trump is using to justify the forced removal of unhoused individuals from public spaces in the nation's capital. The fact that someone typed out that this would promote, quote, "promote healthy relationships between the community and the singa, City of Binghamton Police Department," when it is consistently been VPD officers who are harassed and displaced community members at our parks is equally astounding to me. Um, I mean, I see very little difference in deploying officers to treat homelessness as a crime here in the city and what's reflected at the federal level in every action being taken against marginalized community, communities right now.
So I don't wish to get into the, to the national landscape unless other council members feel similarly to Councilwoman Rathwell. I don't know if that's.
I'm making a direct connection between the national landscape and the approach of these RLs.
Okay, I, I guess a couple of things on that. Um, and again, without diving into the national landscape, um, these RLs were prepared last week. So they're, they're due down to the clerk's office on the Wednesday prior to work sessions. Um, and these programs, um, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, Investigator Keemack, but these programs are existing ones that have helped promote, uh, public safety and, for example, the burn grant officers in the parks for, uh, several years now. These are, these are not new.
The, the, the only one that is new is the, um, the New York State SCIP, the State Crisis Intervention Program. However, the, the ones that we use for officers to engage with community members in parks, um, have been ongoing grants that we have received, uh, for years now.
Mm-hmm. I, I certainly understand that these are not new. I think even after the fact, this model, this method of policing, and again, that claim, the pretense of public safety, uh, is a false narrative.
I, I think you're entitled to that opinion, Councilman. I just, for the rest of council, I wanted to, um, on, on the parks grant specifically and the, um, the, this discussion that was just being had about ERPO. Um, if you have questions on that, I would encourage you to reach out directly to, uh, Assistant Chief Ryan or Acting Chief Ryan. Um, ERPO is, and again, please correct me if I'm wrong, because I am not, uh, an expert on, uh, the technical side of, of policing here, but that's used, uh, regularly by the police department, um, when there are, um, orders of protection, um, against individuals, so possibly in cases of domestic violence, when there might be a threat to schools, uh, and a belief that there are guns in the homes. Um, so I just, I, I understand the context being provided by, by you, Councilwoman, but that's kind of the realities that, that we're talking about here. And I would just encourage you to reach out directly to, to the police department if, if you would like to know more about that.
Um, and as well with the, uh, extreme risk protection orders, it does also include, um, the district attorney's office as well as the judicial, judicial, judicial system, excuse me, um, because a judge has to sign off on any decisions, obviously to remove people's property for a certain amount of time.
I've got a, I've got a few questions. Um, so specifically on first one, RL 25-134, um, is there any way that you're measuring the, the effectiveness of this program? Is there a way, or is there any requirements around that?
Um, there aren't any major requirements, uh, in regards to the effectiveness because it's hard to measure, um, how effective, uh, it is when officers are engaging with individuals in a, in a positive way. You hope that it's effective. I just don't have a, uh, good matrix, I guess, um, to measure the results of their community engagement.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then in the next RL, RL 25-135, um, funny is for investigate, investigators and mental health professionals, like, who, which, uh, agency would you be sourcing mental health professionals from?
Yep, we are, uh, so it'd be for investigators for those, uh, um, the ERPO call-outs if they have to spend, uh, time after hours outside of the hours the detectives would work to serve the, uh, ERPO. And it was also to help support MHAS, um, and the, uh, individuals from MHAS that respond uh, with, whether it's patrol officers, patrol officers on scene or the investigators going to those locations, um, for victim services and, uh, if there is the mental health component for, uh, the other individuals involved.
Good, thank you. And so, but it's not, it's not funny, like, a, a full-time position, is it? It's just, I guess I don't, I, how does the, how does that break out?
Yep, so, uh, the ERPO, I don't have the, uh, exact breakout in front of me. Um, I have a general idea that I can give you at least. Uh, it's a couple thousand dollars to assist with equipment, um, for, uh, gun storage. So if we take in guns from these incidents, they need more storage, obviously, to keep them safekeeping, um, while everything goes on through the court system. And then approximately probably 20-ish thousand of that is for overtime for the investigators. Uh, a small portion, um, again, I'm just giving a generalized idea of maybe around 8,000 for any additional training. Um, whether that be like CIT, crisis intervention training for, uh, investigators or officers, uh, as well as mental health, um, and EDP-style training as, and there is a portion of that which, uh, is supposed to also help fund the MHAS for overtime. The crisis, um, workers from MHAS that respond to help them.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had on those two.
Anybody else have anything? So just for the people at home, we kind of tied three RLs together. The three RLs were, or are, RL 25 dash 134, which is a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept grant funds from the US DOJ for the Edward Byrne JAG Program Fiscal Year 23. RL 25 dash 135, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept grant funds from the US DOJ for Edward Byrne JAG Program Fiscal Year 24. And RL 25 dash 136, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept grant funds from the New York State DCJS for Burn State Crisis Information Program, or Intervention Programming. That's just so everybody at home would kind of have an idea what we were talking about. So we'll move on to RL 25 dash 137. That is also in Municipal and Public Affairs. Councilmember Middleton is the chair and Investigator Keemack is still in the hot seat.
Okay, oh, this is RL 25 dash 137, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept grant funds for the New York State, uh, Gun Involved Violence Elimination Give Initiative. So can you talk about that, uh, Kyle?
Yes, um, so this is funding that we've received from, uh, the Department of Criminal Justice for New York State uh, for multiple years now, and these funds are to help, uh, uh, use crime prevention strategies throughout the city to help try to reduce aggravated assault crime and, uh, gun-related crime.
And I know that we received this in the past too, so this is a, a new grant, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just double check. So the grant comes from the state. I think with another question I had regarding. I'm just looking if anybody has any other questions. I'm looking, I had one.
Nobody has any questions? Are you still looking through at Councilmember Middleton?
I'm good. I can email if anybody doesn't have any other ones.
All right, Kyle, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Next is RL 25 dash 129. That is also in Municipal and Public Affairs with Councilmember Middleton and Deputy Mayor Megan Hyman is our presenter.
Hi, Megan.
Hi, Councilwoman.
Um, this is RL, uh, 25 dash 129, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an extension agreement with Binghamton City School District for three school, uh, school resource officers?
Yes, um, so this is, uh, uh, an extension agreement, which, um, uh, an extension agreement between the city and the school district for, uh, school resource off each of the high school, uh, the middle's, uh, East Middle School and, uh, West Middle School. Um, it, uh, this year, um, just to reflect the dates, it's for the 25, 26 school year, obviously, and the, uh, current salaries for the police officers.
So at large, there's no evidence that SROs effectively improve school safety or reduce violence within schools? So what data does your office or the department have to demonstrate that either of those goals are being accomplished?
Um, we've provided to council, uh, previously, a survey that was administered by the school district, um, uh, taken by, uh, students at the schools that, um, uh, spoke to, um, the safety and their, the interactions and relationships with the SROs. Um, I'd be happy to find that and share that with you.
So no hard data or metrics identified relative to school safety or reducing violence?
What kind of data would you be looking for?
So you set us a survey, so a survey would be subjective, uh, so quantitative data in terms of violent incidents. I mean, even like there's data that indicates the presence of SROs negatively impact student perceptions of safety in school. Did the survey counter that? There's also evidence that disparities within disciplinary action taken by SO, SROs in schools mimic the same racial and disability-related disparities we see in community settings. Has that been tracked? Is disproportionate impact tracked? What are the actual metrics that are being identified or benchmarks determined to demonstrate that this agreement is at all effective? Again, and I think my primary concern would be because there's no evidence at large that it's, this kind of approach is effective.
Yeah, I guess I would encourage you to talk to the teachers and staff and the students at the schools. Um, certainly it's reflected in the survey, but, but our office hears it frequently too, from the superintendent, um, and just anecdotally from residents and parents that we talk to. Um, so that's what, you know, we base it off, off of, um, but, you know, I, I would encourage you just to, to reach out to the, the district. I'm sure anyone over there would be happy to speak with you on this.
Again, this is basically the same contract we looked at and discussed last year, correct? Just changing the dates and stuff?
That's correct. The dates and the salaries.
Okay.
Yep.
So the contract does represent an SRO salary of 93,501. Uh, my two follow-up questions to that statement would be, are you aware that the average teacher salary in the district is 52,594? And do you believe that the responsibilities and impact of SROs on students' learning environment compared to that of teachers warrant the $40,000 disparity in compensation?
Well, Councilmember Rathmel, I can actually answer that one. To be an SRO, and Megan can correct me, they have to be on the force for at least five years. And if you look at the Binghamton Police Scale, at five years is where they're at, the 92,000. So even though they're working as an SRO, they're still receiving, they're paying benefits versus their PBA contract.
Okay.
That's the only reason for the disparity.
I do think should be paid more though, for record. I'm all for that.
I think all union workers should get paid a little more for the record. I, I don't have any more questions on this than anybody else. Okay.
I think, I mean, okay, I'm gonna do the best I can to remember the survey results, um, from last year, and it seemed like while the majority of um, students had positive experiences, there was still, I'd say like 20 to 30% that had a negative experience, and that was a concern for me. Um, and I will look that, look those numbers up again, but I think it's, it's fair, Councilmember, uh, Rathmel's point that it's like, those are, um, kind of students' perceptions and feelings about how they receive, um, the presence of an SRO in their school, but it's not necessarily like a determining factor that having an SRO lowers violence in schools or increases safety. Um, and I think where you'd want to find that information wouldn't be necessarily from the school district, but if there was like a study that was done, um, I don't know who would do it, some like national center that's focusing on that. Um, cause I, I dug into this quite a bit last year when it, it came around and there's, um, kind of conflicting ideas on SROs in schools throughout the nation, and I think it's, um, worth examining with uh, kind of open eyes. So, um, that's all I wanted to add, because I spent a lot of time with it last year.
Well, Megan, did they do a, did they, did they do a recent, um, a recent, look, study, quiz, I can't think right, survey, thank you, a recent survey regarding it?
I don't know. I'll ask. Uh, we haven't been shared, uh, one has not been shared with us since the last one we shared with council, but I will find out if they've done an update since.
That might be something good to like work with the schools with.
Anyone else have any questions on this RL? Or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on. Next is RL 25 dash 131. That is also Municipal and Public Affairs. Councilmember Middleton is the chair and Deputy Mayor Megan Hyman is our presenter.
Uh, this is RL 25 dash 131, a resolution to accept funding from the Office of the District. I don't know, uh, for community-based policing services? So can you explain that?
Yes, yep. So, um, the DA's office announced, uh, earlier this year that the Binghamton Police Department would be one of, I believe, five local agencies that would receive, um, this funding from its traffic diversion program. Um, and it was to go to, um, uh, enhancing community, uh, policing, specifically in our case, it will go to, uh, the foot and bike patrols. Um, so we're asking, uh, for this to be expedited, um, just because the timeframe that the legislation from the county sets is, um, through September 30th, 2025. So just allowing BPD to be able to start spending that funding down, uh, as soon as possible.
Can you talk about what they mean by community policing? Is it the same thing that we discussed earlier, um, with the other RL? Are these, is this, that money going to be used towards that also?
So this is, uh, specifically for overtime for our police officers to do, uh, foot and bike patrols, um, downtown and in neighborhoods and in parks. Um, they've been doing that throughout the summer. You might have seen police officers, um, downtown or, um, uh, in parks around the city. Um, it's a somewhat newer initiative, um, that, um, we kind of did to respond to what we were hearing from business owners or neighborhood groups. Um, that's been, um, well-received from the feedback that we've gotten, certainly from the, from the businesses downtown. Um, so this will just go, uh, to support the overtime for those officers on the additional foot and bike patrols.
So can you define the department's philosophy on community policing? And its strategy in incorporating that philosophy into department culture and protocol?
I can say as it relates to this, it's, um, a great deal of it is just about po- positive interactions with, uh, community members, with business owners, with, uh, people in our parks. So rather than having officers just in their patrol cars responding from call to call, uh, not being out and interacting with the community, this gets, uh, uniformed police officers out downtown where there's a high density of people in our parks, um, having positive interactions, just checking in, seeing if there are concerns, um, trying to build the relationship between, uh, law enforcement and, and residents.
With the goal of improving community relations and ultimately theoretically providing safer communities, which is the language, I think, in this RL. I mean, similar question to the SRO request, what metrics do your office or the department use to determine those benchmarks? And what data do you have to demonstrate that community-based policing within Binghamton has in fact accomplished those goals?
Certainly the police department keeps, as you can imagine, a plethora of statistics and data. If there are specific, um, data points that you're looking for, um, we, we can assist you with that, or you can just reach out directly to the police department. Um, but I think it's this, uh, the fact that when law enforcement and the community, uh, are working well together, um, the belief that that helps with crime prevention, that that helps, um, just kind of having a better, uh, open line of communication between police officers and the people that they're serving to understand what the concerns are.
It would be that, that crime prevention piece in particular that, again, because of the narrative of improving public safety, I think, and I did do some research, so I mean, media coverage earlier this year, some of Mayor Krim's comments during his budget address last year and decre- decreases in crime overall within the city, as far as I can tell, those comparisons don't fully account for grand larceny and simple assaults. And reporting stopped for that in 2021, not quite sure why, but I, I mean, rates of burglary and robbery have decreased in the last decade, but murder, rape, and aggravated assaults have remained about the same. Uh, we still have four months left in the year, and we've had five murders in this year alone, which ties 2016, falls just short of 2015. And I think, I mean, that's why I consistently ask for data that actually demonstrates any effectiveness to these requests for funding. We've been throwing money at the issue of, quote, public safety for years. Since 2020, the department's budget has increased by almost 3 million. We haven't even hit budget season yet. This year, in the requests for funding increases, we've already gotten from your office and BPD total more than a million. What we're doing, I believe, quantitatively is not working. And I'm not incredibly interested in approving six more grants or contract extensions to enhance the department's capacity to keep doing the same thing.
Do other councilmembers feel the same way? Should I just be addressing Councilwoman Rathmel? I guess I'm just, I'm just partially curious, but, um, where are you, where are you reading your, where are those, uh, statistics from that you were quoting?
Some of them are from city reports, some of them from FBI reports.
Okay, because the latest FBI data that I have seen, um, Part One Crimes, Property and Violent Crime, it's the lowest on record. Um, so, um, that's, that's the FBI, uh, data that's publicly available. Um, and, you know, we can kind of sit down and talk more about this. It's probably not me that, that, if you want to get into the crime data, it's probably someone from BPD, but, um, just getting on the same page with that might be helpful. But again, I would just say, um, when we go to neighborhood groups or when we hear from residents, um, who are either calling our office or we're just out in the community talking to, um, there's really not a, um, a, a neighborhood out there that's not asking for more investments in public safety. Um, so that's, that's what's driving this and, and the statistics happen to back that up.
But I just wanted to say one thing, um, what do you mean by they're asking for more cops? Is that, is that what you mean by public safety?
Just more investments in public safety, I think, um, you know, whether it's something like this, certainly the foot and bike patrols, we hear that all the time, um, that residents like seeing the police officers uh, in their neighborhoods and that they're available to kind of talk to them. Um, I think it, investments can look like a, a lot of different things.
I, I, I think, you know, going forward, um, we really do have to reexamine, reexamine public safety because people are fed and they're taken care of, that, those things prevent crime. So just having the police there doesn't really prevent anything. I feel like we need to, in the future, now, you know, we can start talking about ways to kind of redirect public safety, because we do kind of need to invest more in our communities, not just throwing the police there. We have to figure out why people are committing crimes, not just being reactive to the crime. So I, I, I honestly, that's just my thoughts. I, I think that, you know, this is good for right now. It, it, it brings a pretense, like people feel safe because they see the cops, but we really have to start thinking outside of the box and why people are really honestly committing crimes.
And it's the difference between perception when seeing law enforcement and actual prevention or proactive problem solving, which is one of the principles of community policing, like addressing the root cause of crime rather than law enforcement just responding to incidents after they occur. And the root causes of crime, and I mean, we've talked about it so much at this, in these chambers.
So certainly, um, not to cut you off, but we are certainly investing in those things too. And I agree completely that there are other needs and those are, uh, part of a bigger picture when we're talking about, about crime. The, this, this RL specifically is a grant from the DA's office, so it's money coming to the city to be used on foot and bike patrol. So it's not money that could be go, could go anywhere else. Um, I just want to make sure that that's, that's clear as part of this.
I mean, I think I would also point out, like, community, generally, some reports do indicate that community policing can be effective, can be effective at reducing crime rates, but it's only been demonstrated in cases where there's efforts to foster trust in community. in cases where there's efforts to foster trust and communication uh in municipalities. And I know you've represented foot and bike controls, but we've had residents reaching out now for weeks, again, given the current status or state of the Binghamton Police Department representing very much a lack of trust, uh a lack of accountability, a lack of transparency. And there's no way to like, so again, talking about throwing money at the issue or adding foot patrols when we've not actually addressed the culture within the department uh that has been raised by so many residents uh and the Attorney General, et cetera, that is currently playing out uh via a third-party investigation, like we're addressing the actual culture is going to impact whether any approach is uh meaningful or effective. And it's wild to me that, given the state of the current department, we have six RLs in front of us to put more funding into, again, something that is not working.
Does anybody else, else have anything else they want to add before I ask for a vote to expedite?
I guess, I guess the, so you, you're saying bike, bike and foot patrols are synonymous with community policing? Is that?
I think it's, it's, uh, yes, it's one of the ways that the Binghamton Police Department does community policing.
Is there, do we have a, a definition for community policing within the city? That's like, I, I think um this goes back to the now I can't remember the, the name of it, but the police uh it's not reinvention, what the police re-
Reform?
The police reform and reimagination, that whole committee, I, I followed that very closely and it didn't seem like there was a standard um definition that was being used when speaking about community policing. I think uh that was some people thought community policing was like adding cameras in your neighborhood um or but other people more equated it to having like relationships with um officers that are doing like foot patrols. So I think like I would like to see, maybe it already exists, if, but if um the police department has a, a, a definition of like what that actually means, I think that would be really useful.
Yeah, yeah, I think at the, the, at the heart of it is what I was saying before about getting officers out of their patrol cars and just moving kind of beyond that responding from call to call, any type of positive proactive engagement with, with the community. Um, so these foot and bike patrols, but also like if an officer attends a, a summer camp um or visits the Boys and Girls Club, um at any type of positive relationship building. But a- again, um Chief Ryan or you're welcome to reach out to him directly. I don't know if they have sort of a technical, a more technical definition than that, but he would certainly be able to talk to you more um in depth. Um, and uh, uh Captain Flanders too, he um heads up the um foot and bike patrol uh portion of B P D and he would be a very uh good person to speak with on, on this.
Thank you.
I know the East Side Neighborhood Watch Group that I always attend their meetings, they love when they see uh the officers out there on foot and on the bikes. And they look forward to seeing them out patrolling the east side every summer. It's something I hear every year. So, does anybody, well, we probably should wait a second for Councilmember Middleton.
Oh, just quickly, because it was identified, I mean, you mentioned part one crimes, which do include a number of major offenses. I think what I pointed out specifically is the difference between or the relative flat rate specifically for and I'll just pull it, uh because I want to make sure you mentioned getting in line on that one. Um burglary, robbery have decreased in the last decade, murder, rape, aggravated assaults have remained about the same. So those are all included in part one, but when you break it out is where you see the actual individual increases and decreases or flat rates. That's all.
So this is requiring expedition. Can I get a motion to expedite?
Oh.
Oh, you got a question, Councilmember Kavanaugh, sorry.
Late expedition, I, I wouldn't be doing justice to Councilwoman Madavetsky who's not here if I didn't ask for the reason for expedition, please, because it's not on the paper.
Yes, sorry that it's not on the paperwork. Um, the way that the Broom County Legislature wrote the legislation for the DA to give the city this funding was um in the timeline of uh September thirtieth, so that's when they have to spend it down. So just asking for it to be expedited so they can start spending it uh sooner.
Thank you.
Now can we have a motion to expedite?
I'll motion expedite.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rathwell?
I think to me, a motion to expedite, even though it would give me a sooner opportunity to vote no, still feels like a support, so I'm gonna say no.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilwoman Madavetsky is absent. Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray is absent. Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is four one.
Seeing we have nothing left on the agenda, can I get a motion to end the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
And a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.